Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to our first meeting of 2022. This is the regular City Council meeting, January 3rd for the city of Ballarat Beach. Please rise to join me, the judge of which.
Good question, Mr. President. Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Republic, some of you may just wonder about the successful delivery of the justice of our law.
Head clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Robinaki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swob.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
And City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
Thank you. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Motion, please? Motion by Leslie Notaro, second?
Second.
Second, Judge, as Robin?
Yep.
Any discussion? Citizens, anything? Back to council? All in favor of approving the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven zero passes. The agenda is approved as is. Next comes citizens' comments. Citizens, the way we do this, if you've not been here before, we have a podium up here. Please come up, identify yourself, your name and your address. You have three minutes of time. Please address the council. And there's rules published, the rules of decorum, I'll summarize it in one sentence. Just basically treat us the way you like us to treat you. Just everybody be nice and we'll have a nice meeting. With that, I'll open it up to the floor. Any citizens like to speak? John Hanson.
John Hanson, 23rd Street, Ballarat Beach, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, several months ago, this body reviewed a bid to upgrade microphones for this room. This body rejected the bid because it didn't include visual zoom, the ability to zoom, and so on and so forth. I believe it's been some three months now, maybe a little bit longer, I'm not sure. I'd like to know what the status of that is, why it's driving on. We're into a new year. It was way back, early '21, if I'm not mistaken, that we brought this forth. Still no absent, other than some wiring done, but we still have the same microphones. We don't have this new device bid. Second item I'd like to bring up. The median on 22nd Street is full, and two weeds going to seed. I'm fighting a losing battle with those weeds going to seed and growing in my yard. I've lived here almost six or seven years now, pride of myself, the fact that I have zero weeds in my yard. Now, I've got to go over out there with my wife and spray those weeds. They're coming across the road. I'm fixing to go over there and kill weeds myself because they've really gotten bad. And whoever the lawn services that were contracted with, you need to fire them because they're ineffective. So somebody from public works ought to take a look before you cut the grass the next time to see how mature these weeds have really gotten. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson, I'm going to bring both of your items up later on. Okay? You're not allowed to answer back right now, so I'm going to bring one up to the city manager, and the other is unfinished business. Any other comments by citizens? Seeing the other hands, I'll close citizen comments and move to the presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office and Code Enforcement Officer. I'm not sure who wants to go first.
Good evening, Steve Plack, for the record, I am the new code enforcement officer, Lieutenant Jacob, from Indian Rock, back on December 5th. Whatever it is you need to service for the city, just to let you know, in the last month, did handle a couple complaints as far as parking was concerned. And also had two cases where we had contracted a four day without permits, and it was worked through. State for any questions?
First, I want to welcome you, and I've heard a lot of great things about you, so I hope we bring that to Ballarat Beach here. We had a meeting not too long ago, and if you haven't seen it already, if you haven't spoken with Danny, we kind of went over what our philosophy is of how we like to have code done. And essentially, it's an education process. It's not to see how many summonses you could rack up or anything like that. I think that's the way Danny approached it. He got rave reviews. We didn't get very many complaints. There's always going to be one or two people who are going to complain just because, but for the most part, you know, those complaints all went away, so. That's, I certainly mine, and I think that was the rest of the council's philosophy as to how we approach this. And if you follow that, I think you're going to do great.
Thank you, sir. I've been working with the city manager. That's the philosophy of your work.
Excellent.
Okay.
Anything I can, before you go, anything else with the council? Citizens, any questions? Thank you again. Welcome. Do we have a presentation from the sheriff? I see someone coming up.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today, I hope I come back to tell you that this is a wonderful city to live in and outside of the normal house checks, conducting traffic stops and occasional issues with, well, not issues, but calls for service at the resort. It's a great city.
And remember, it was pretty, pretty big. I think the bigger thing was December, right, when they had the car chase? That was December, right? The bank brokers, yeah, that was December, so that'll show up.
Yeah, that was the big, that was the big deal.
That's the biggest deal that we're ever going to have for 20 years, probably.
And that was the end all be all for 2022.
That probably.
And it came from Clearwater.
Yeah. And you guys got them. And I said last month, that was great work, and great work by our citizens, too. And one of our citizens gave him a real hard time when he tried to carjack them, and that's great, so.
Absolutely.
Excellent job. So again, my thanks. You've done a wonderful job, and a wonderful job to the citizens who are keeping an eye out because that's your partner, basically, on the way this works. And looking forward to a great 2022. Counsel, any comments? Dave?
There was a motorcycle accident that happened. Apparently, it was very serious, and it shut down traffic in all directions, had a causeway built. Can you kind of give me some details on that?
Well, anytime you have a motor vehicle accident that involves anybody with a motorcycle, depending upon, it's called the mechanism of injury. They take that very seriously, and they'll call a trauma alert. And when they do that, it's basically just to make sure that the patient gets to the hospital as quickly as possible and that metal staff are at the hospital prepared to render aid as quickly as possible. And when there's an accident like that, traffic can be shut down for quite a while to make sure, at least for our agency, we have a major accident investigation team. So if it was a situation where that person had life-threatening injuries or, you know, had to die, then we would call in that specific team to continue the accident investigation. And the roadways will stay shut down, and we will protect the scene until we get word from the hospital. You know, we'll send a deputy to the hospital. And once we find out that there are circumstances that do not require that team to come out, then they can kind of start wrapping things up. But anytime a motorcycle goes down, it's always a scary thing.
No, I don't, I don't really have any details about how it happened, but did it have anything to do with the new traffic pattern?
From my understanding, it, it didn't. Unfortunately, sometimes people, when they ride motorcycles, they think they can fit in the spaces where they shouldn't. Or they will split the lane, whereas they will ride in between two cars and just go right down the middle. And unfortunately, when they don't pay attention to the traffic laws and realize that they're on a very small vehicle with no protection, and they make bad choices, it's happening, unfortunately. So the, the new traffic pattern actually really worked quite well. I had the same question posed at Ballarat Shore. And, you know, the days of traffic getting backed up to St. Keeling, we're all familiar with, especially during the summer. And it takes you 45 minutes to get from, and work the park all the way down to here. It was quite nerve-wracking. Now things are moving a lot smoother. People are catching on, and it hasn't been as much of an issue as I think some people were expecting it to be. For the most part, all the people who live here, and either Indian Rock Beach or more, and use the causeway to come across. Familiar with it than most other people who are in the area, they're following suit. You know, we've had some minor fender damage where people get confused because they're listening to a GPS because they're not around it. So I guess the true test would probably be when you've gone spring break something. When we'll have that influx of traffic, then this is hopefully going to fix.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other council comments? Citizens, any comments? Let's get your.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night. Okay, next we have items four and five, the consent agenda. Item four is approval of the December 6th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. And item five is approval of the city attorney monthly invoice for legal services. I take them together. A motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Frank Banker, second?
Second.
Second by Robin. No discussion. Go right to a vote. All in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Passes seven zero. That concludes the consent agenda. Move to the regular agenda, one item. Request city council direction regarding requests for on-street parking passes for election canvassing. This is made by the city manager. Motion by the mayor, second? Second by Robinaki. I'll pass the gather.
This was my request to the city manager for parking places, parking passes for five election workers so that we could accomplish election canvassing. I'm not going to recuse myself because this affects every single candidate and every single political issue that could possibly come before Ballarat Beach. So it's not just my issue. The way I learned it in the memo is that if it affects everyone, you don't have to recuse yourself. You're not approving this for me, you're approving this for everyone. So what are we asking for? What we're asking for is our parking policy right now says that you're not allowed to park on the street. While you're allowed to park on the street with certain exceptions. Interesting city we have here. We allow you to park on the street when you're having a party. We allow your landscaper to park on the street. We allow your dog groomer to park on the street. We allowed your, I guess, your roofer and your construction people to park on the street. We allowed you to host a party law and have a drink and spell, and you're allowed to park on the street. But if it comes to free speech for politicians, we don't have a carve-out in our law. Does it make the law good? No, it makes the law bad. We've been talking for the last three or four meetings about First Amendment, First Amendment. And when you're going to stop or put obstacles to political free speech, you're never going to pass scrutiny, strict scrutiny of your law. Okay? And that's exactly what this does. This is not a law, by the way, that this council passed or the prior council. This comes from before then. It comes from before Fred Riley was attorney. I want you to know that. But it is a problem, okay? So I asked for these passes, and Mr. Riley reviewed the law, Attorney Riley reviewed it with Mr. Reeves, and he said, and he said he needed a compelling reason. So the compelling reason is First Amendment political canvassing, which is protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. If that's not good enough, then take the equal protection clause because you cannot, we don't have a no parking policy. We have a limited parking policy. So you can't allow the dog groomer to park on the street, or the landscaper to park on the street, but you can't allow a politician to park on the street. Presents an insurmountable obstacle. So we need to change our law. And in the meantime, since there's an election on right now, and it doesn't matter if there's an election or not, there's political happenings every single day of the year. You can go door to door and give any political views you want. You can talk about Washington, you can talk about Tallahassee, you can talk about New Jersey, for all we care. You have the right to knock on someone's door and pass out literature and engage in conversation. They have the right to tell you they don't want to talk with you, and you have to leave at that point. So we need to change our law, and we need to change it immediately so that it doesn't interfere with this election and anyone else's rights. It's really that simple. There's really no, no discussion on this. It's not, there is no carve-out right now. Parking at our public lots is absolutely not workable. You know, Harrison Avenue is, or I guess Bell Isle, the extreme, extreme of our city is well over a mile away from some of those lots. And it's ridiculous to expect that when, again, the dog groomer gets to park in front of their house. That is not a state interest. It's not a constitutionally protected interest. So Mr. Riley's recommendation was that we can possibly change the law. That's fine. We don't have time to change the law for this election. Running out of the clock is not an option. So that's what needs to happen. It needs to be changed permanently, but this council can give the relief right now that is necessary. Also, in closing, remind you that we relaxed this law. It's not in there for the citywide yard sale multiple times and the city festival. Okay? So that was all permitted in the bill. With that, I'll yield the floor.
Counsel?
Yeah, I've got a couple things to say. I'm going to be extremely consistent in my viewpoint, as I have been in the past. This center was filled with residents when you wanted to go ahead and open up the parking for the festival by the sea and multiple other events. To the point where the residents felt and even stated in the meeting that they felt like they were being threatened. I went out and spoke with a number of people regarding this, and they do not feel that we should open it back up again. I agree with Attorney Fred Riley's comments that we should not change it. That's what I got out of the memo. You asked for five parking permits. I'm sure that there's five people in this community that you can reach out to that would voluntarily give you their driveways if that would help you. You have the Marina parking lot that can be used. You've got a number of other opportunities to go and knock on people's doors, so. I'm not for this, and I appreciate our city attorney's memo on it, so I'm going to be consistently going for what the citizens want. And they have told me they do not want this. They have never wanted this.
Any other counsel?
I would agree with what the swot just said. I'm not in favor of this. There are plenty of driveways that you can park in a friend's driveway to do this, this political politicizing. There are parking lots, ones over the Ballarat Shore, there, City Hall, Morgan Park, Marina. There's plenty of parking around. If it's necessary or wise to open this up for election.
Anyone else? Yes?
I, I agree with the two previous comments. The thing about casting aspersions on commercial vehicles and private gatherings, the difference is those exceptions are in the existing ordinance. So it's not just arbitrary. People showed up at personal gatherings or whatever, parking on the street. Commercial vehicles, the dog groomer, or the landscaper come under operating businesses during the proper times, during the proper days. So those are existing exceptions. The other one that you bring up is not an existing exception. And the other thing I, I agree with is there should be enough open or parking spaces available in people's driveways who might support the candidates or whatever. What I do take exception with is typically when there's a personal gathering and a person comes down to apply for a permit, there's a exact date, there's an exact time, there's an exact place, and there's an exact person who's sponsoring that. I don't see that, and I, I don't agree with the option of just signing off on like open-ended permits for parking on public streets. It's been an issue all along, and I think this community takes pride in the appearance that is presented in the community by open streets and not parking on the streets and that sort of thing.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Are we going to be inconsistent by enforcing, you know, no more party parties and other things except this? Mr. Gunn said, if you're doing operation of business, absolutely, you should be able to park.
You know, personal, private gatherings is, is an exception that's within there. You can issue a permit.
Well, I understand it, but you could actually use that personal gatherings for campaigning for free speech. And, and that's what I'm saying. So are we going to eliminate everything except business opportunities? I beg of my long time. Rooker comes out, he has to make it up to 30 feet long. He needs a street to do that. I have no problem. But if we're going to say you can't park here because you want to go around campaigning for somebody, then I, I don't know where you turn the line.
I think the difference for a personal gathering to fall within that context or thinking is that if you were having a gathering to introduce someone or some issue to your community or your neighborhood or something like that, you would have a specific sponsor, you would have a specific place at a specific time. And you would issue permits and say, all you do is you put one of these in your, in your windshield. It's not just, hey, we're going to have people coming over, where?
Wait, 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 wait. Let's, let's give everyone else the opportunity to speak, all right? Anyone else?
I don't think Frank has finished.
Okay, it's been going back and forth. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm, I'm agreeing with a lot of what Mr. Gunn says, but like, A, if we're going to go out campaigning, it will be a specific, it should be a specific time, okay? I don't want people knocking on my door at nine o'clock at night, or six in the morning. So that would be, you know, specifics there. And what about when we're having the yard sales? We open up our streets for that. So I, I think, all I'm looking for is consistency. I agree, I mean, with some other comments, you know, you do have the beach access lot you can park in. I walked, I walked this whole, I walked the whole city. I didn't park in anybody's parking. I parked at the beach parking lot when I'm camping. I knocked on all the doors. I wanted to visualize the city and see what was wrong with the city, what was great with the city, okay? So I like that. You'll see me on golf board every other day, up or down, all right? But I just want consistency here. I don't want this to be a political battle here, you know, saying, well, I'm supporting this guy, and I don't think I have enough people to knock on their doors, so I'm not going to support it. I'm.
Anyone else? Anyone else? And I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity to speak yet.
I'll go next, that's okay. I'm kind of with Frank. I'm all about consistency, and I think if we weren't allowing for the yard sale, then we should consider that because I know the next time there's a yard sale, the first thing we're going to bring up is, hey, can we do the onsite parking? So if you're saying no to this, then you should say no to the yard sale, which wouldn't be fair to the citizens. So again, I sometimes I feel like we bring up issues and our opinions are made by the person bringing it up or who they think it's going to benefit instead of thinking about, hey, let's think of this from the perspective of the citizens, which is why we're all supposed to be up here. You know, I have my own personal opinion about this, but when I think about, from talking to citizens and from their point of view, to me, it seems like this may be a reasonable request, but maybe smaller parameters, not a, a free-for-all, like, oh, anytime during the week, any hours, maybe a set number of hours, set number of days, maybe certain days of the week. And do that. And I think this would benefit any candidate. Three of us up here are running. It would benefit three of us. So it's not like this is just to benefit one person. It could benefit three of us up here, as well as one of them I see is out here is running as well, other candidates. So this isn't going to benefit just one person. And this going forward would solve issues next March. And the next March after that, every time we have an election, this would help resolve that issue that's going to be brought up. Because I would hate to see somebody going door to door, Frank, you're in excellent shape. You're in better shape than I am. And you can walk the whole city, but not every candidate physically can, and we have to take that into consideration. They can't park at the Marina or Morgan Park and walk all the way up and down Bell Isle and Tiffany and all those side streets. So they aren't physically able. So I'm thinking about that as well. So I, I, I support this because I can see this could be a big issue in the future, and I think we can take care of this now. But maybe close the parameters a little bit so it isn't a free-for-all like Gunn said. So I, I'm kind of agreeing with Frank and what he's saying.
I'm going to speak up on this. I put some thought into it, and yes, whenever you compare it to other events that occur in the city, it does seem a little slanty. However, there is one big difference. All of the other events, these are people that want people parking in front of their homes. That's the difference. As far as campaigning, I don't want the opponent parking in front of my house all day. Would you? And that's, that's pretty much all I've got to say about it. Anyone else? How about we put a time limit? I'm sorry? Put a time limit on the parking permit, that after one hour, the car has to be moved. Like you said, you don't want people, when people want to have their friends and neighbors over or whatever, and they're parked in front of your house, they're not just parked in front of your house, they're parked in front of a lot of houses. And maybe those residents don't want those people parking. So put a time limit on this.
And with that being said, like with the yard sale, Glenn may be having a yard sale in front of his house, and not all the people going to his yard sale are parking in front of mine. I don't necessarily like that, but hey, in the benefit of what's good for the city to benefit Glenn and the other people around, you know what? I'll suck it up and deal with it and, you know, practice my backing up skills as I'm trying to get out of it, so.
To my understanding, we shut down the yard sales last time because of the potential threat of being sued. I mean, I remember that entire council meeting. So am I incorrect, city manager, that we did not shut down the yard sales? Because they can still personally get a permit for one on their own, but we don't do citywide ones anymore. So that doesn't open up our streets to just everybody coming to park. It's a private property that they're parking at to go to that sale. And as far as, you know, all of the other events and people parking in front of everybody's driveway, it's done on the same side the event is. And to my knowledge, most of the people that have events, those people that are parking in front of their houses are there at the party as well. So I don't know that that would ever be a concern, but if it is, we can certainly look at it. But timeframes, you've got strangers coming in, you're going to hand five passes to that nobody knows, nobody knows these cars. If they're not strangers, then they have potential outlets to park in people's driveways. That's what is so confusing for me. Is because what are we going to do? Go to bar, go and have five people come over here and just park whenever? We don't know these people, what's going on in the neighborhood. Things happen in the neighborhoods that, you know, are very worrisome to people. They don't even call the sheriff because somebody has a special parking permit there to do this, so. I mean, I'm going with what the city attorney said as well. His email said we should not make this change, so I am right there with you.
Well, based on his email, I'm reading, he made the following recommendations to consider an amendment. He didn't say under no circumstances change this. He gave us options. So just, just for the citizens who don't have the copy of this email. So there's no confusion about what the, and maybe we can get the attorney to speak for himself and speak for his memo instead of putting words in his mouth.
Mr. Dunn, did you have, did you have a comment?
We use that word consistency. Well, consistency is the ordinance, the existing ordinance. Let's be consistent with the existing ordinance. And there is no exemption for the item that we're discussing right now. If we don't like the ordinance, we said it before, let's change the ordinance. Well, we don't have time to do that in some people's minds or wherever. So I'd say, if you want to be consistent, we apply the existing ordinance as it's stated and the law and the ordinance of the city attorney. If you don't like it, then we change it at a later date.
And just to make another comment based on Rita's, on the whole stranger thing, I mean, I would like to think that any candidate would go find five people running me off the street and say, hey, scan out my pamphlets. Hopefully, it's these people you know, that you trust, that know your issues, know your passions, and can relay that. I think all of the candidates here would say they would pick five worthy people. And as far as strangers, I mean, I don't know my lawn guys and the guys who run the mower and the hedger, and I don't know my pool guy and his assistant, and I don't know Glenn's lawn guy and pool assistant in front of my yard, so they're strange. Glenn's lawn guy and pool assistant in front of my yard, so there's strangers in our neighborhood all the time parking, so I can't think we can make that argument, because we have strangers every single day in our community, and not one person bats an eye about that.
And that's very true, now, I mean, you can ask those people, or anybody that's running, and I'm not even sure, and maybe our city attorney can answer this voice, that the people that are running should even be making comments, because this does directly impact those politicians at the present time, so I'm kinda concerned about that as well. But I don't know about your situation with your people being strangers, I know all my people, I know all my neighbor's people, I mean, it's a very well-known community, so I just, if you're not gonna go hard on bringing strangers, then ask the people, if you can use their parking lots, I mean, their driveways. It should be that simple, that way you're not inconveniencing the entire community just to pass this, and just go out and ask those people. I mean, gosh, I could get five driveways at a heartbeat, right now. I mean, it's just that simple. I mean, I don't get why you guys want to change the ordinance that we've had in effect, and I can certainly guarantee you that if it was for any other reason or a reason I brought into this council, and I don't think you could deny it, that it would not pass, period. So it's not about what the events are, or who's running. I think all the politicians that are running should stay out of the whole entire conversation, in my opinion, but, you know, we're doing it, so let's do it.
Anyone else?
Oh, God. This is tougher than I thought. Folks, we've been doing this now for the last five sessions, talking about First Amendment rights, and we're just not getting anywhere. I think this piece of wood in front of me understands it, because we're just not getting anywhere. Okay, let's dispel some of the garbage, okay? The letter that I wrote says, "The election activities will occur between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Mondays through Saturdays." Now, when I did that, I'll say I made a mistake, because I was looking at Solicitors' rules for our city, but we actually have campaign things that actually are a little bit more generous. It's 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily, including Sundays, for all you religious folks. Now, you don't know the people? Do you know that illegal guy cut on the lawn? I bet you don't. I bet you don't know where his city, where he lives. And by the way, Supreme Court has already ruled, you cannot ask people who are campaigning for a permit, cannot make them tell you what they're gonna do. I cannot believe the mentality sometimes that I hear and feel, we always did it that way, that makes it right. Yeah, there was a lot of laws that this country had, that we always did a certain way, that didn't make it right. And this law's not right, and Mr. Riley knows it, because it will never pass strict scrutiny, it's a restraint on expression. And you will never convince anyone that it's okay to put a dog breeder who you don't know for beans, okay, versus a political candidate. As for, you don't want them? Did you hear that comment? You don't want political freedom. That's what you don't want. Look at John Hansick right now, a man who I admire tremendously for his service to our country, defending that exact right. We're just ready to throw it away. We don't care, as long as you have a nice flower bed, that's okay, but how dare you go door-to-door? As for finding driveways, to find driveways, you gotta knock on doors. I don't have to give reasons, and by the way, as I said in the beginning, you didn't listen carefully, this isn't me. Does Joe Biden know people on Bellisle? Does Donald Trump? How about Ron DeSantis, does he know him? Ashley Moody, does she know him? This is every political candidate, plus it's every political pack. If we want to recall certain people on this council, you have to go and make an appointment with people? I don't think so. That's not what the Supreme Court says. It says you have the right to knock on doors, and when you say you can't park on the street, you gotta walk, let me tell you something, I used to be able to walk and run, I ran seven consecutive New York marathons, and I ripped up my knees, and sometimes I'm lucky if I could walk twenty feet right now, because I got bone on bone. So I'm not walking to Bellisle, on a good day, I could run to Bellisle, but I'm not walking there, and you can't make it work. Just because you passed the law years ago and do consistently wrong, doesn't make it right. We talked about this when we were talking about the right of anyone up here to speak about pending litigation, another restraint on First Amendment speech. We talked about this when we talked about people making comments before other councils and having retaliation. We talked about this when you try and say, the mayor can't say this, or the vice mayor can't say this, and I said it over and over again, you don't lose your rights when you come through that door as an elected official, you don't lose any rights. We have a right to canvass without obstruction, not just me, every single person in this room. You can go knocking on doors from ten to eight every day of the week. The only thing says in here that says, if a person doesn't want me on the property, you have to leave. You have every right to go up to their doorstep. And I could use people inside the community, or I could be like Leslie Natero did last time when I ran against her, and use people outside the community, could use anyone I want. And anyone could come into this city and knock on doors. You don't make the Constitution rules, you swore to uphold the Constitution, ladies and gentlemen of this council, you swore to uphold it, that was that oath, it wasn't just a photo op. It was an oath, you swore to uphold the Constitution, and now you're wiping your feet with it.
Let's go to the citizens.
I hope I knew this in three minutes. Johnny Hansick, Twenty Second Street. I've heard compelling arguments from both sides of this issue, but I disagree with those that are not in favor of it, based on what, and I'm sorry I have to say this, what the mayor just said, trashing and trampling on the Constitution. I'm not the only one in this room sworn up, uphold and defend it. And to sit there and say that because it affects a candidate or candidates, that's suppression of a constitutional right, and that really, really ticks me off. And I don't care what you think about that, but I defended it, and I've defended it to my death. What had occurred is compromise. You can temporarily put an exception into this ordinance until such time as you have ample time to modify the ordinance. And again, to the mayor's benefit, his time limit that he proposed was less than what's allowed by statute. So what's wrong with compromise people? And he clearly has stated on more than one occasion, it wasn't just for his benefit. And I read all of this the other day, and words were put into the attorney's mouth, he made a recommendation, he didn't put it etched in stone, this is what it's gonna be. But I'm suggesting that this council find a way to compromise, because again, it does not affect one candidate, it affects all of them going forward. And it's good until the election. It can be done, I don't see why it can't. Both sides get what they want, I think, to a point. But don't trample on people's rights. You've heard so many times the fact that we have the right to freedom of speech, and in this room, I know we're three attorneys, but yet, what I don't see and I don't hear is compromise. It can be done.
Anyone else?
John Vansh, Twenty Seventh Street. I have time and time again had landscapers from Bel Air Shore park on our street and do the landscape across, I don't know them, I don't know who their lawn men are, and they park on our street time and time again and do their lawn. Not only do I not know them, they have repeatedly, on several occasions, threw their palm fronds and stuff up in our neighbor's yard. So how is that justified? I don't know them. And as far as the festival by the sea, okay, we had a parking plan in place, okay, and it was addressed right away, because we only allowed parking on one side of the street. And as far as the garage sale goes, I believe it was suspended because of COVID, okay, because of COVID. So all these spends that are being put on things in this room are just horrible, horrible. That last garage sale was canceled because of COVID, okay? Why are we having a garage sale when we were in the middle of COVID? That was the safety reason and the liability for this city. And as far as your other events, which were wonderful, that the new park board has put on, I didn't see any hoopla about any kind of parking that might go on at their events, none, none, no worries about parking on the street. So it's one group of people causing the same havoc and the same problems, because they're trying to play politics with things, okay? When is this city gonna wake up and realize they keep violating people's rights over and over again? This is not the Republic of Bel Air Beach, or is it? Thank you.
Retirement, One Nineteen Ninth Street. My brother in the Navy did a good job with the Constitution, I'll forego that lecture. But I do want to reiterate, can we see some compromise? I mean, I can't speak for all citizens, but I'm so sick and tired of this binary alignment with one party or another, and being completely obstructionist, trampling on not just the constitutional rights, but our sanity and our rights. We live here, we're so sick and tired of this crap of going against and overpromising a politics that creeps into it. Where's the compromise? Why not four hours a day? Why not Monday through Thursday? Why not, you can only park in front of someone's garden for thirty minutes? I don't care, but let's find some rational, actual compromise and get things done. Stop saying, well, I'm not on that team, so forget it, it's no, and it's no way, let's just abandon the whole thing. And I also want to reiterate this nonsense, I don't care, because you've done something to reiterate the mayor's comments for twenty years, that doesn't make it right. We've done dumb things forever, let's just stop and use some common sense. So please, can we have some compromise? And if we're gonna sit here, and if we're gonna elect officials, can we please have some intelligent discussion on how to get to yes? If it's a time limit, if it's a day of the week, if they must have parking stickers from Bel Air Beach, I don't know what those are, I can come up with fifty of them on the top of my head, and all run the damn commission to figure out a way to get to yes, since our elected officials can't ever seem to get anything done but argue in these meetings. We don't care about decorum, what we care about are results, and our taxes, and our city, and our rights, and our access, and all the reasons why we pay to live here. So please, please could we see you just get to yes, and stop wasting all of our time? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jamie LaFerr, Three Thirty Two Zero, Abyssus Drive West. I have seen no discussion about quantity of permits that would even, should be considered. Is five the right number? One the right number? If it is allowed to go through, whatever it is decided, if you decide to have permits, that every candidate can issue the same number of permits immediately, and not have to go through a rigmarole. What applies for one, we supply for all, and we need a signature to make sure that all candidates would get the same number of permits, if that is what the council decides to do. But is five the right number? Maybe it's only one? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to the council.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a few comments.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
Okay. This matter came to Lynn as the city manager, and he forwarded it on to me, and it was a request by Joseph Manzo as a candidate for five parking, to be issued five parking passes. So the question that I address is, does the city manager have authority to issue five passes for the purpose of political canvassing? So I did what is, you know, absolutely typical, is you look at the city code provision to see if there's a provision that addresses it. The provision is a prohibition, and I'll come back to probably why there's a prohibition, but the prohibition is that you can't park on the city streets with exceptions. So then I looked at the exceptions, and to determine, in my mind, whether there's an exception that fits the purpose of political canvassing, I did not find an appropriate exception. So my initial answer is, there's not an appropriate exception, and if the city council wants to amend the ordinance, there's a very direct way of doing that, and that's the thing that should be done. I encourage the council to consider that, is adding a exception that would give political canvassing, and you can set parameters on what that would be, so that in the future, this, you know, that is a important right to canvass, but the, to me, that's the first question, is whether you should consider in the future enacting an amendment to the ordinance to add an exception, okay? I recommend you do that, I think that would be reasonable, I think it would clear up this issue for the future. I want to step back a minute, and it's my understanding that based on the history of the city, you have narrow streets, and there is, the discussions I've ever been in on in the two years about parking have always been related to health and safety, and whether, where are you going to create situations where you have bottlenecks that lead to an EMS vehicle or a fire truck not having access to an emergency? That is obviously a very important concern, and I would feel fairly confident in saying that that is probably the underlying reason why the policy is that you do not park on the streets. Long ago, when the code provision was made, the council chose to make some exceptions to that. So that's my understanding of where you are. The, I struggle a little bit with the argument that's being made, in that the prohibition against parking is not a prohibition against going and doing canvassing, you can go do canvassing, there's no prohibition against that. The issue is whether not getting a permit is such a, you know, intrinsic part of canvassing, that if you take away the permit for parking, now you have effectively taken away the ability to canvass. And, you know, I will tell the city council very honestly, I, like any of the other lawyers that are here, could make a case going for either side of that. And, you know, this is one of many things that I think is, you can make an arguable case either way. So for the time being, I will leave that there. So, for the time being, I will leave that there. Listening to the tone of the discussion, and I have done today what I frequently do, I have chosen to say nothing till latter part of the discussion. The several citizens that talked about compromise, I think have a lot of merit in the suggestion that they make. I will tell the council, and you all know it, when the issue came up about the sign ordinance, and it was specifically political signs, the city council chose to lean in the direction of making sure that political speech was allowed. And I thought that was a very appropriate measure that the city council took in that you aired, I don't wanna say aired, but you leaned towards free speech. And I would encourage you to do the same thing here. This is a, the thing that I don't like about this, and I said this before with the sign ordinance is, I don't like when you have an ordinance and you are making an exception and you're not following your own law, okay? There's always an, again, a counterargument to be made. You have a code provision and you're not following your code provision. This issue came up, and since this letter came in in December, this was the next available time for it to be discussed at the council. And Lynn and I discussed it and said, "This is something, if y'all want to consider a flexible choice, then that's up to you." You did that with the sign ordinance, and I think, I will say again, you did it at that time so that you were leaning in favor of free speech rather than the other direction. So, really, to me, there are two issues that you need to really focus on. One issue is, do you want to amend the ordinance so that you add an exception for political speech? If you're going to do that, what I would recommend you do is do consistently like you've done with other things, bring that up at a workshop, and at a workshop, you discuss it and fashion a, you can give direction to myself and city manager to fashion a provision and bring that to a workshop, and then y'all address a specific provision that would basically be the exception. So, that's one thing I would recommend you do. Second thing I would recommend you do is consider whether you want to do, like you did with the sign ordinance, and say, "We're not going to enforce this no parking provision for this purpose." And it's a very narrow purpose, and it's a purpose that is aligned with leaning towards free speech, okay? Although, I again will say, free speech and parking permit, to me, are two different things. But canvassing, you, again, could make an argument that being able to get access to people is intrinsic in canvassing, and, you know, I, again, say, any of the lawyers here could argue either side. But I would encourage you to really focus on the second issue, which is, do you want to do something that would compromise? And that's really the question I would suggest you discuss forward.
Thank you. Back to council.
Yeah, I want to say that, thank you for your very impassioned comments. And I agree with you guys. I mean, I think this council, we have not been doing a good job of trying to compromise and see other people's point of view and come to the middle. Any effort of compromising, I would suggest we do what Fred Riley said, put in, I may be using the wrong words, a temporary exemption for this election season, maybe, and I agree, you know, maybe not five passes, three may do it, or whatever number. Maybe limit the hour so it's not as widespread, so it's more contained. And then if we do go ahead with that, then I think that absolutely everybody would have it. Like, I would say, as soon as we said yes, Patty would call, not tonight, but call every candidate and say, "Hey, if you want them, they're here. Come and get them, you know, use them." So, everybody has the same rights, and it doesn't benefit just the people present at this meeting. So, I agree, Fred, I'm all about compromise, so we gotta figure this out so it benefits everybody, not just for this election cycle, because it's whether or not I'm running or not. Like I said, I'm not using my personal views. I probably won't even need a parking pass. But I'm doing it for the next election, the next election after that, and maybe somebody who's running who is handicapped and can't walk the city and needs access. So, I don't think we should put any restrictions on anybody's access to be able to do their First Amendment rights. So, what can we do as a council to make this work for not just the benefit of this election cycle, but the future ones, and come to a middle ground? We can work together and make this work for everybody.
I'm gonna go ahead and agree with the city attorney on the statement that we would be breaking our own rules and that we really probably should move this to a workshop and so that we can address it more clearly and more thoroughly rather than just all of a sudden deny, stop at a rule and put in a temporary exception. I mean, there's people that have First Amendment rights all over, even, you know, Bel Air Shore, Indian Rocks Beach, all of those have First Amendment rights. Sometimes those are, you know, compromised and taken away from them because of other people's opinions. But with that said, I just really think that we should look at this a little bit more thoroughly so that we don't open up the city to some kind of an issue and go with the city attorney's suggestion of admit to a workshop and to, in the meantime, follow our own rules and our own ordinances.
Mr. Goode.
I stand on the idea of consistency. The ordinance is written, it's there, there's a protocol if you want to change it. The city attorney's entrusted. If we start examining inconsistencies every time something comes up that doesn't agree with the ordinance, and we have to start making subjective decisions for everything that comes up that differs from the written existing ordinance, then we are going to spend a lot of time, because people are gonna start pointing their finger and say, "Well, you did it for him. How come he can't do it for me?" Or, "You didn't think of this, so now you need to give me a temporary exemption while you go ahead and amend the ordinance." I think it's a very slippery slope, and I don't want to go there. I think there's a process for dealing with it. But I don't think it's in our best interest to start dealing with subjective changes whenever something crops up that's not there. Is the council gonna start making these subjective decisions every time somebody raises a question about an existing ordinance? That makes these jobs very difficult, especially the city manager, because somebody comes in applying for a permit or says, "Well, hey, it's written right here. You can't do that." Well, you did it for him. I'm applying for a special exemption. So, does that mean the council's gonna start doing this every session, start looking at all the possible exceptions to the ordinance? I don't believe that's where we want to go. That's his job. We do the ordinances. If we want to change the ordinance, there's a point for that. Let's do it. Makes his job easier, and it allows us to strategically focus on the big issues. We don't need to be managing bulldogs. We don't need to be managing parking permits. That's his job, and we've given him a way to do that, and it's in the ordinances. Thanks.
Mr. Manchin.
So, if it's his job, how come he didn't do his job? How come he referred it to this council? Now, you can't have it both ways. He knows how to do his job when he wants to. He unilaterally approved those citywide yard sales. In fact, it took him to task twice for approving it without council permission. He knows how to do his job when he wants to, and he knows how to kick the can into somebody else's yard when he wants to. So, it is in our bailiwick right now to decide on this, because the city manager didn't make this decision. He was given a letter from me, December 7th, was it? December 20th? No, I'm sorry, that's Fred's letter. My letter was what? I think it was December 5th, right? Or is it December 7th? Whatever, doesn't matter. He was given that letter. And to that point, okay, with regard to my letter, okay, I'm sorry, my letter was December 17th. Talking about compromise, okay? I didn't ask for unlimited parking. I'm not gonna bring in 100 people. But you know, if I had the ability and I had the resources, I have the ability. If I wanted to bring in 100 people and canvass the entire city in one day and put cards on everybody's door in one day, you can't tell me I can't do that. I don't have that ability, but it would be nice to be able to, okay? I asked and said, this is quote, "I would anticipate that these election-related activities will all occur between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM, Mondays through Saturdays, and will conclude with sign pickup the day after the March 15th election." Quote, "There will be no overnight parking, and most street parking for the above purposes would probably be less than an hour or two on most city streets." I know because I did this last time, and I rarely spent more than an hour on the street. But if I get in a conversation with somebody, or one of my campaign people get in a conversation, they shouldn't be limited by any time limit. I can assure you, no one's gonna be parking in front of someone's house all day and having a conversation with them with there being 1,500 registered voters in this city. As for this specious argument that we do this for our safety, well, you don't do it for your safety. If a landscaper can park a truck that fits up the, fills the entire property with, of a 60-foot wide property, then you can't have a problem with a car that takes up about 15 feet. And we're not asking to park on both sides, and I will remind the city manager that we have asked time and time again that that be codified for construction workers who continue to park on both sides of the street in construction zones, and it's not on their permit that they can park only on one side. Now, there's no limit on how long your party can go. You want to hold a three-hour drinking binge? Three is fine. Five hours? Go ahead. 10 hours? Go right ahead, because we like drinking in Bel Air Beach. We just don't like politics. Who called it the People's Republic, okay? You're not gonna put any time limits on it. There'll be no compromise. The law here says between 10 and 8. I will tell you, as a candidate, you will never find me or any of my people out after dark. We come in when the sun goes down. I don't want to go to people's houses at night. It's a scary situation for both parties. We're off the street by sundown, and I tried to avoid Sundays. And if I did go out Sundays, it was Sunday afternoon. So, this is nonsense that we're trying to do this for safety. We're not gonna park 100 cars on one street. We're gonna park one car on one street and spend an hour knocking on doors, and then we're gonna go to the next street, and the next street, and the next street. And the reason why there's five, it was a guest event. Based on the staff that I know that I have and how many people can reasonably be expected to be on the road at any given time, we might use one of those permits, three of them, five of them. No one's saying that it only is for me. As I said when I opened this up, it's for everybody. Everybody has the right to the same amount of permits. And as long as you're doing the political stuff, you're fine. What we're also forgetting in here is that the freedom of religion is just as important as the freedom of political expression. So, when you're redoing this ordinance, make sure you carve something out for the freedom of religion, because those folks who knock on your door and want to spread the word of the Lord have every right to do that. Even if you don't want them, even if you don't know them, even if you don't know the Lord, you have, they have the right to knock on your door, and you have the right to say, "Please leave." So, you can't kick this can down the road. The election is on now. I'm a qualified candidate. So is Bobanaki. So is Dave Gaddis. I see two or three other candidates in this chambers right now. And every person here can work for or against the candidate if they wish. So, everybody in the room has the right, and every person in the city has it, and people beyond the city have it. So, I would recommend, or just exactly what this says, issue the passes temporarily. You can fix the law later. But kicking this can down the road is akin to saying, "No political expression." You are putting an insurmountable barrier in the way. So, don't tell me I have a free expression and I gotta walk two miles to do it, when the landscaper can pull right up to that house with his dually and gigantic Ford F-350.
I'd like to make a comment. Had we had this conversation six months ago, I would say that it was a legitimate concern. But now what we've got is, we've got one candidate asking the city to change the rules of our election. It's already started. Everyone's already had their, they've got their strategies going. We all know what we're up against, and midstream, we're being asked to change the rules. It's not right. I'm not voting for this.
A couple of comments. I don't agree with kicking the can down the road, and I don't agree with, "Well, this ordinance has been in effect for however many years, therefore, it can't be wrong." And Glenn, I do believe that we need to have changes when changes come up. Otherwise, we might as well be in the 1940s, you know? Might as well be, you know, a woman who can't vote. Things change. As issues come up, we have to debate them. We have to change them. If an issue comes up that's important to one citizen, we have to give that respect and right to that one citizen to talk about that one issue and take it seriously. And if that means we need to make an ordinance change, guess what? We need to do it, because the right thing to do is what's right for one citizen or for all. And let's face it, every issue is not gonna be right for every citizen, nor is every citizen gonna agree with it. So, I don't agree with the whole kicking the can, and every time something comes up, we have to change the ordinance. Guess what, Glenn? That's our job. That's what we're here for, is to make changes to things as things evolve. And if this came back up six months ago, you may not have had an issue, but to me, I thought, well, he was the first person who thought that it was an issue. Because, you know, honestly, if I was gonna go canvassing, I probably would have parked my car and not even thought about being in trouble, because that wouldn't even cross my mind. And then the first time someone said something, I'd be like, "Oh, crap, you're right. Did you need a parking permit? I didn't even think about that." Because I just don't think that way, I guess. So, he's probably the first person who thought of it. And honestly, with the way our politics have been going lately, I can see people chasing people down and saying, "Oh, look, so-and-so parked there for more than five minutes. Let's call somebody and give them a ticket for illegal parking." So, I don't really trust anybody at this point not to do anything underhanded. You know, and going back to bringing up some other issue we had, you know, there's people on this council that had no problem, and even supported the idea of giving illegal parking passes to Bel Air Shore for a televised whatever, for Tom Brady over at Bel Air Shore, had no problem with that, but now has a problem with this. And honestly, I probably will not benefit from any of this parking. I don't plan to go parking and go to her door, you know, and walk the whole entire city, because I just don't have time. I'm sorry. You guys can talk to me if you have anything. But, so, and this has nothing to benefit me. I'm just thinking of the other candidates, the other seven candidates, if this would benefit them. Again, if it benefits one citizen, then I'm all for talking about it and figuring it out. So, and, you know, Dave, you're against it, but you would probably benefit from this if we used it, because then you'd be able to go canvassing as much as you wanted, and you wouldn't have to worry about walking, and let's face it, it's gonna get really hot here before the election, so nobody has to worry about walking and sweating and being all sweaty when you talk to candidates, so this could benefit all of us. So, I think this could be an issue going forward with future candidates, with current candidates. So, even though this may not benefit me as a candidate right now, it may benefit somebody else. And as an elected official, I'm here to make changes that will help benefit our citizens. So, I think we should vote for this and do our part in making changes when changes are needed. So, I also agree with Rita. Maybe this does need to be moved to a work session to be more effective, because, I don't know, can we make any big changes tonight or do anything with this, Fred? I don't know what the protocol is, so.
If you were going to do something, I would suggest you do the same thing as you did with the sign ordinance, is very specifically do a resolution. To my knowledge, I'll have a workshop in mid-month, and if you wanted to have a special meeting to address this in a, or in a special meeting where a resolution would be in front of you that would be very specific, then that's what I would recommend you do.
So, then I agree with Rita. Let's move this to a work session so we can compromise.
Well, if you're gonna decide to do something, then to me, the decision should be, yes, we want to do a resolution that temporarily authorizes this and puts in parameters. And I'm telling you again, I have some misgivings about it, because, you know, you now are doing a resolution that is arguably inconsistent with a code provision, and that is not normally good legal practice. But, you know, I'm trying to fashion a way that you could compromise if the council wanted to do that. I need to make another comment, too. I will take issue with the... I, I will take issue with the, the point made about the city manager. In the two years I've been here, I have worked with him on many, many things. And almost every time, the first question I ask him is, "Is there a code provision that you're aware of that authorizes this to be done?" And that, that is the first thing I'm going to go looking for. And the, the reason I wrote the email that I wrote is that unfortunately, in the climate that has been here during the time I've been sitting here, he gets criticized if he does something and he gets criticized if he doesn't. So the, the question that he asked, or him and I discussed is, "Are you currently authorized to do this?" And after looking at the code provision, my answer was, "Currently, you are not authorized to do it." And because you're not authorized to do it, if the council wants to amend the ordinance, then they should consider doing it. And if the council wants to consider a interim measure, then, then that's up to y'all to discuss and decide. That, to me, is infinitely reasonable. So you're having the discussion and whatever you decide is the way you go. My final point will again be, like the sign ordinance, I highly recommend leaning in favor of doing something that fosters free speech. I don't see how far, you can go too far wrong if you do, do that.
Anyone else? Mr. Baker? Yeah, um, I, I, I guess I'm one of the weird candidates, I believe, when you should listen to the citizens. And you had three citizens come up here and say, "Compromise. Compromise." This is such an easy fix, an easy thing to do. And before you guys came up, I said, "Why don't we just compromise and do an hour or two? Maybe one candidate per street for two hours. That's allowed. All right?" I, I used to build bridges and buildings and roads for a living. This, I, I go across this bridge and thank God I have the opportunity to live here. All right? And this pettiness is just deplorable, in my opinion. Okay? This is so easy to fix and say, "Look, you wanna go out and canvass for somebody? One car per street, two hours, and you're all." Why can't we just do something like that and keep going? Anyone else? Wes?
Am I correct if what Fred was saying, that we need to do it on a resolution? We can't just do it here and say, "Go ahead and..."
The reason I would suggest a resolution is that this is a place where, without it being on paper, then you, you will have a dispute about what was specifically decided. If you want, if you wanna do something tonight, then give me a few minutes and I'll, I'll write up whatever you direct me to write up in, in the form of a motion. But I would still encourage you to follow up that with a resolution because it need, it needs to be clear. And I'll go back to the point about whether Lynn's authorized to do something or not. He, he gets a rough ride if, if he does something. He gets a rough ride if he doesn't do something. And, you know, that's, the, the question is, is he authorized to do it or not?
My inclination then would be to do a resolution for the workshop, which is in two weeks. To a resolution for the workshop, whatever, have a special council meeting at the workshop. I don't quote on anything. And have a special council meeting, discuss it at the workshop, and then have a special council meeting after that. That would be my inclination.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we let Mr. Riley take 15 minutes and come up with a resolution tonight with a few basic ideas which we discussed. Hold on, let me get a second on that. That's not, not currently on the table.
You need to have a, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a resolution, it should be on the, in the agenda.
What, you said we could do something tonight?
It, it wouldn't be a resolution. It would be a, basically a motion and a, it would, it would be a specific motion. Okay?
And that would be legal and legit if we put some parameters?
Yeah, but it's, it's, I get saying, the, the problem I, I've experienced since I've been here is unless you highly define things, then you're going to have disputes over how you, it should be interpreted.
Well, my question clearly is, can we come up with a motion with a few basic, simple procedures of parking on the street? A time limit, a number of cars on the street? It's like three, three items. Would that be a legitimate motion to make tonight, pass no legal ramifications?
You can certainly do it. I, I, I don't like it as much, to, to be honest with you. Because it, again, this has been a place where no matter what you do, it's disputed.
Well, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying, Mr. Riley, is I'm not gonna go against your advice. All right? Um, this council voted over a year and a half ago against your advice, and now we're in the middle of a lawsuit. All right? So you're our legal counsel. If you're saying we can do something, let's do it. If you're saying we can't do something, I'm gonna support that.
Well, my, my suggestion would be authorize us to prepare a resolution and bring it up at the special meeting prior to the workshop. That's imminent. That's two weeks away. And you, I mean, you can have a special meeting sooner than that if you want. I mean, if this is something that's, that's urgent, you can have a special meeting. Can't have it Thursday this week because I know I won't be here. But you can have it early next week if you so choose. Yes, sir.
Does anybody know how many days before the first ballot goes out? 38 days. So you wanna sit around for 15 days while we pretend to put together a resolution or motion? The action item for tonight, and we could only do action items. That was a resolution that Dave Gaddis passed. Says, "Request city council direction, request for on-street parking." I want to give the city manager direction. We're either going to say, "Issue passes," or not issue passes. It's that simple. We're not gonna wait 15 days when there's 38 days to the first ballot. We don't have till March 15th. Very few people vote on March 15th. Most of the people in this city vote by mail. And those things go out on February 10th. And I believe the overseas ones go out for the folks that are in the military. There's a significant amount of people in the military in this city. Those go out, I think, February 3rd. I could be wrong on that date. So the clock is ticking. Every day we sit around and wait. I'm ready to hit the road tomorrow. So, I don't know about the other candidates. Some said they may never hit the road, but other people may wanna hit the road yesterday. Um, we already hit the road, by the way. We defined this law. I'll tell you what happened last time this happened. Okay? Very smart deputy, very smart deputy, knew his common law. And when Paul Marino, our former attorney, said, "No, you can't do it," he said, "We're not enforcing that." And somebody called the police on us, and he laughed. And he kept moving. Smart move. Smart move. Okay? That's the way you protect First Amendment. They swore an oath, too. It just needs something to them. So, we can't kick the can down the road. This says we have to give him direction tonight. The direction is either issue the passes, and I don't care who else applies. From everybody in the room, get five. I don't care. Give five to everybody in the world. Send five to Joe Biden. But I want my five. Now, you wanna tell me I need four? All right, we can argue all night. But I wanna give direction to our city manager. He asked us for direction, and we owe him an answer. And I'm gonna give him the direction. My vote will be issue passes to me and to anyone else who wants it. Your law's unconstitutional. You know it. It'll never survive strict scrutiny. It's a restraint on freedom of expression. If you lose, you lose the entire parking ordinance. Don't go there, people. Don't go there. Just issue passes. And if tomorrow morning, a religious organization shows up, issue passes to them, too. Just like you do with Julio the landscaper. Give him the passes and let him run and stuff. And by the way, for worrying about how many people are gonna be on a street. My street one day was filled with tree cutters, filled from beginning to end. You know what was nice? They were cutting the trees in Bel Air Shore. I think we're gonna have to take a voice vote on this, Patty.
To make a very clear motion that you would vote for.
The motion is to give the city count, the city manager, direction. So the motion is to give him direction to issue the parking passes to political candidates.
Direction, i.e. approval to go ahead and issue them?
Yes. He has direction, so either he can vote yes or he can vote no.
Direction regarding requests. Direction could be, yes, do it, or don't do it?
Exactly. Yes, do it or don't do it. Is that clear enough? Yes, you can do it, or no, you can't do it. And it's not just demands, oh, it's to anybody. Any person who claims political canvassing.
No, if this, if this passes, I guess that's with the understanding that we would make a resolution to make it official. Is that what I'm? Because honestly, I don't wanna do anything that's gonna go against our code. I don't wanna do anything by the local correct, but also...
That wasn't part of the motion. That, that's, the motion on the table that you stated is that you give, you were making a motion to, for the council to give him direction to, to issue the passes. That's the motion I heard.
It's, it's not clear, and it's opening us up for more problems in the future, is what I see.
Yeah, I mean, with the current motion just stated, it seems to me a little unclear. And I'd like to have more of a finite, down-the-road fix the rule. Not just, I don't, I don't ever wanna get in a position where we're just saying, "Yeah, sure, go ahead for everything." I wanna fix the problem if there's a problem. I don't wanna just on a whim say, "Sure, you can have this. I'm sure you can have that." I wanna fix the problem of the law. So if we do a motion to temporarily do it until we can do a work session to do a resolution, I may be fine with that, but I'm not fine with just this motion.
Would anyone like to entertain a motion to table this?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to table this until the next city council with discussion at the work session about a resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One nay? Nay. Two nays. All right. Motion table passes, and we will discuss this in the next work session. We'll now pass the gavel back to the mayor. Item seven, unfinished business. So we had a question from John Hansig. I'll bring this, I'll start this with regards to the microphones and PA system. He said, "It goes back a couple of council meetings. It goes back to the beginning of time. It goes back to this entire council. This stuff is junk. It's outwitted. It's a lot of useful life. We don't have proper video. We, sitting in the audience, when I sat in the audience before I ran, you couldn't read the, the numbers that were put up. There used to be monitors in front of us here we don't have, and we get all this paper and everything else up here. And it's going and going and it's going, and where is it?"
Well, mayor, evidently, some, the, some of the citizens that either weren't at the meeting, and you don't remember, but a couple of months ago, the council approved the purchase of it, and the equipment is on order and is expected to come in in February.
I remember us approving it, but I was under the impression it was gonna be in a lot quicker. But I think that, that was going back to September or October that we approved that.
Uh, it was after the first of the fiscal year. I don't remember.
On October.
Yeah. If we're able to get anything quickly, and with storage and supply issues, we're lucky if we get it that quick.
Well, they told us February, so that's, that's with the contractor that we awarded them to. Ben was awarded several months ago.
I remember it. I remember it. I'm just surprised it hasn't come in yet, but I guess that's because of COVID. Any other unfinished business? City attorney, any comments?
No report this evening.
City manager?
Uh, I gave you the, we finally got our final payments in for the last fiscal year, so we've got September's financials, October's and November's not yet to date. That's what we're waiting on. Also, I left at your chair a map that we'll discuss at the work session about the vote smog zone for our buoy situation. And there was, there was a resident at the last council meeting that brought up a comment that I thought was misrepresented. After running the numbers, it was misrepresented. So I gave you a copy of the capital expenditures for your street. The resident made the statement that all the money was going to be EI, and I broke it out by street and how much money's been spent for the last four years. Because there again, someone gives misinformation, let's get the facts out. So I provided you that, and we'll probably, we'll post this on the website so the residents can see it also. Uh, you got the code report. The, the Citizens Advisory Board at the last meeting authored, after they were looking at the digital sign ordinance, they offered to, if the council wants to do this, to go through the sign ordinance and do it as a committee to kind of bring something back to the council because we keep kicking the can down the road. So I guess what I'm asking, what's the consensus of the council? Would you like them to do that? Uh, they're willing to do it. Uh, and, uh, I mean, that's part of what we brought them on for. And, uh, so, just need some feedback. And if, if it's okay with the council, then we'll just give them the sign ordinance and have them go through it. And hopefully, we get a final product that everybody will be happy with.
I'm good with that.
I, I have an opinion on that. I've spoken to several attorneys recently about our sign ordinance and, and the problems we've been facing. And this in no way is a poor reflection on Fred Riley. But there are firms out there that that's what they specialize in. They do this all the time. We could probably farm it out, and they could come back with something that absolutely would not fail the test. That's, it's just a thought. I don't know what the council wants to do, but it's something to consider. Because at the end of the day, if we, we bring in the Citizens Advisory, they're, they're going to run into the same issues, and most of them are not attorneys, if not all of them.
Would there be a way to get the cost on that first?
That's where we have to talk about.
Yeah, just send out and ask them for at least a rough estimate of what that would cost and how many dollars.
I like the idea of giving it to the advisory committee first. The advisory committee is made up of citizens here within Bel Air Beach. They have opinions about why they live in Bel Air Beach and what they want to see. So why not give them the first cut on this thing to say, "This is what the citizens of Bel Air Beach consider important." And then we give it to the experts to put it in the boilerplate that's enforcing the law. I'm Kevin Cross, but I, I certainly see the wisdom in giving it to our advisory committee. That's why we brought those people on board. So we have some input from our residents into what this thing should look like and what's important to the residents. So that's all.
I agree with Glenn. I think we should definitely do the advisory committee first before we go to professionals. It's a good idea, but let's, let's not jump the gun. Let's ju, sorry, didn't mean that expression. Sorry. Um, let's not jump ahead. Um, let's start with the citizens. Totally unplanned. Let's start with the citizens first, see what they have to say. Because like you said, they live here, they're invested in this community, and they actually have a say with what they want. So I like that idea.
And I'll make it clear.
Now, I'll make it clear, they asked to do this at their region. There was no discussion about it, it was brought at the meeting, and they asked me to ask the council. So, I think that's a positive thing.
Fine with that.
Finish, city manager? Oh, you want feedback on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm against it, okay? They're not lawyers, we couldn't come to a decision with three lawyers on this board on the regular sign ordinance. Some people want to go back to the one that was illegal, some people want to adopt the new one. These guys aren't going to get to first base, they're waiting. I appreciate the offer, I made you an offer, it was declined, I respectfully declined their offer. I offered, by the way, folks, to give my own legal time to work with Fred Riley, free of charge, to fix the sign ordinance, and four to three, we lost. So, no, we're wasting our time and kicking that can down the road. You need to get a sign ordinance, and we need to get regulations. I don't think we need an outside law firm to do it. Fred Riley wrote a very good ordinance, it had a few things that needed to be tweaked, but it overall was in good condition, I thought, so he can do the same for the digital piece.
Anybody else? Glenn?
I respect your opinion, sir, but is that the direction of this entire council?
Oh, I said that was my opinion, he was looking at me. Let's take a vote. So, but you see, this hasn't given direction, by the way, is what we should have done in the last one. How many people, by show of hands, and I'll call the totals, want to turn this over, get this, tell the city manager, hand this over to the Citizen Advisory Committee? One, two, three, four, five, okay? And two against, Frank, raise a hand. Okay, so it's five to two, it goes to the Citizen Advisory Committee. See how painless that was? Next, anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mayor, that's it.
For you, okay? Number one, I got mail that was open, so I assume that maybe you guys looked at this, and it was from Ron DeSantis, our governor, but it wasn't really like anything, it was like from Ray Eubanks. But we are supposed to do a evaluation appraisal notification by February 1st for Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
You are, so I don't, you have this letter, right? I don't need to worry about this?
No.
Wonderful. But I do want to talk to you about the citizen comment, about median on 22nd Street, the weeds that are turning to seeds, and why is our landscaper not cutting that stuff down?
I'll check on that with the public works people, our own people cut the grass, I do have a neutral on that provides weed control, and I'll find out what they put on it and what their last thing was, and I'll relay that to Mr. Hanks, because he's going to go out there and take care of it in his own way, we don't want that, not yet.
All right. Anything else for the city manager, council, citizens? Yes, citizen in fact?
Robert Riesberg, 231 Howard Drive. I see that we've got a candidate's forum scheduled for the 10th. I would like to know, can we do a second forum some other time? Not everybody might be able to make it here on the 10th, and just watching the video afterwards doesn't allow you to answer questions. So I think we ought to have more than one forum for the candidates' party election.
Well, what I'm, Mr. Riesberg, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to hold that thought, and we're going to get that to the city clerk, because she's in charge of our election, okay? So she's coming up next, not related to city manager or she.
Mayor, one thing I did forget, I put the final letter from FEMA, about our 20%, it's line 9. That's our final letter that says we're Class 6, so we're going to get 20% off of the National Flood Insurance Program, so just wanted to make you aware of that. So you've got a copy next time.
That's it. Right, 20% off of the current rates, or is that, is this being 20% that we're supposed to be getting since 1971, or is that another 20% that we don't know about? It's a probable of 60%.
It's, how it works is...
I'm not trying to bring this up.
No, 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 no. Every five years, they come in, they do what they call a verification visit, and we have to meet all the criteria that we had to meet previously to maintain it. And we were a little worried this year, because I guess they gave us points for, just as an example, they said we had a stream. Well, I don't know where the stream's at, but they didn't see it when they came this time. But we were able to get other points with some of the advertising and stuff we did, so we maintained our Class 6, which is important. But it's 20% off, a reduction of 20% off whatever the premium is. So the premium's $10, it's supposedly 20% off that, and it's for the National Flood Insurance Program, not for private flood insurance, it's for NFIP.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for city manager? City clerk?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to forward Mr. Riesberg's comment, so he was asking if it's possible to do, I don't know that it is, but, because I know what was involved in putting it together, but I'd like to hear it from you, because you're the one who puts it together, a second candidate's forum.
That's something that I would have to ask the Women League of Voters, because we have never ever even been here for a forum, we're not involved in it whatsoever this year. The only reason we're going to be involved is because they can't get enough volunteers with the COVID, so they asked us to help them, you know, just do remedial things, and so I really don't have an answer, but I'll do that for you.
Patty, it's one hour, I believe, right? Do we know?
We can't go longer, so that's something, we're meeting with them, Glenn and I are meeting with them on the 6th, they're going to go over a lot of things at that time, so if anyone has any questions that we can discuss.
You have six candidates for council, two for mayor, I mean, there's a lot of issues, and that leaves a couple of questions by the time everybody speaks. I think last time we had a whole minute to speak, which is nothing, so, you know, think of, I don't know, I know there's restrictions, like you said, they can't even get the help that they need, but I have no problem with it going longer.
And I have a question, is there a question-answer session, like at the end, for the citizens? Is that part of it? I can't remember.
That's another thing we want to talk about, the guidelines and the format, because we don't, we don't set that, so I asked him for that, and he's going to give that to me, and that will be sent to the candidate, don't push it.
Right, because if we do have that opportunity where citizens can ask questions, then a compromise, if we can't get another one, would be maybe to email questions beforehand, and somebody, neutral, can read them off, and we can address them, just as an idea.
You can email questions ahead of time, and I can give them to the league, it will be from us, it will just be the questions submitted to them. Also, there'll be cards at the forum, that you just fill out your question, and then they review them at the forum, and decide if they're appropriate, yeah.
As I recall, well, the last time, they would accept citizens' questions, but if they don't get enough appropriate ones, then they have their own, you know, so they come armed with standard questions, but then with the citizens.
Remember a couple about windmills, and I just want to make sure we have...
Yeah, they were asking about what we're going to do about sea level rise in Bel Air Beach.
Right, I just want to make sure we get questions from our citizens, because that's who matters.
Yeah, as Patty said, they will accept, if somebody emails a question, tell them to email it to Patty, and as she said, because of short help, I guess we're going to be the door breeders or something, but they're the ones that's going to handle the questions. And my understanding is what they do is, they may be two similar questions, that some, two different people ask, but they're similar, then they'll try to put it in number one question.
Can we maybe put something on our website, that if you want to submit a question by email, to put that on there, that way our citizens that can't make it know that they could at least get their questions submitted, and not guaranteed we're going to get to them, but...
Well, I was hoping, well, my plan is to have Patty send out a constant contact on Thursday after we meet with the individual, just a reminder that the Candidates Night is January 10th.
That's two days, but we can send that out now, I mean, get, let them know that...
Well, we could send that out earlier, but I'm saying, I want to make sure that we tell the residents that Candidates Night's 6:30, it's not 6 o'clock, and they're available to come and ask questions, but that was our intent, to make sure the public knew.
City clerk, no other comments, right?
Correct.
Anybody have any questions for the city clerk? Okay, go to city council comments, we begin with Rita Soll.
No, I don't have anything.
Leslie Mataro.
No comments.
Glenn Dunn.
No comment.
Frank Banker.
No comment.
Happy New Year, everybody, the council.
Kate Gass.
Happy New Year, everyone, thanks for coming out tonight.
Happy New Year, everyone, I've got some comments, actually, an update for you, and it covers a couple of things that Frank Banker had been working on, and then just some general information that I know citizens have been asking at the last council session. Fred Riley, at the urging of this council, wrote a letter to Bel Air Shore, objecting to their abuse of the parking lots, parking cranes, and other things that were against the usage and against their own ordinance, and in December, December, I believe, 21st, Bel Air Shore met on that, and I'll give you the answer. Your letter deserves no response, was their exact quote. Council member Bloom, who's been behind a lot of this stuff, said that we have fee, simple ownership, we could issue permits and do as we want. So that's what they said. Frank, with regard to your buoy situation, council member Bloom said he will not talk while there was pending litigation. I guess that somehow is supposed to scare me. You're working on behalf of your own concerns, and you were given the blessing of this council to go and speak with them, has zero to do with any ongoing litigation, but they're under some kind of misimpression, and they've said it multiple times, that they will readdress all of this stuff after the Bel Air Beach election. So I want the citizens to know, and I want this council to know, that the Bel Air Beach election has absolutely nothing to do with what happens, with nine personal lawsuits. It will continue no matter what. Their council knows that, I called him the next day, and I generally don't give advice to my opposing council, but I did give him the opportunity, for the fifth time, to settle this matter, and they politely refused again. So, depositions begin in February, and I'll tell them, I'll tell you what I told them, if they go as well as I expect them to, I will be looking to settle this case. Trial is in July. So, that's where we're at. So as for the safety, you can wait till after the election, Mr. Banker, that's what they said.
May I comment?
Not really, you're not supposed to comment on my thing, but I...
Since you brought my name up.
Yeah, I, I'll do it when I finish, okay? If the council has no problem, I can't break the law. So that's that. After April, maybe they'll decide that they want to move on this. I also found quite interesting that they say they intend to redo some of their laws, particularly the ones that are the subject of the lawsuit. Now, we have a trial schedule, a discovery schedule, a deposition schedule, an expert witness schedule, a mediation schedule, and what they're doing, and I told this to their council, is now you're going to make me have to ask that that be extended, if you're going to change your laws in the middle of litigation. Absolutely amazing. No, no, sir, I can't think...
No, you're the mayor, why are we talking about private lawsuits?
I'm giving an update of what I heard at a meeting.
Are you speaking as mayor, as personal interest in...
Are you speaking from the audience? Because if you want to speak, you need to come to this podium and identify yourself. Excuse me, I didn't call you up here.
Okay.
Okay, sit down, and I'll call you up in a second, if I get permission to dispense with the rules. Have a seat. We don't scream from the seats, it's not the world wrestling federation. So I'm giving an update, because certain people, you were the one who actually who came here and asked for an update on the status, and this affects the safety of all of our citizens.
I'm going to go ahead and call point of order, because, city attorney, we did a resolution that we would not speak about that, and as the mayor, when he's sitting up here and he's speaking about it, he's violating our resolution.
All right, I'll do a point of order, we never gave up our constitutional rights about speaking about that.
Let me rule on first point of order, okay? I didn't give up any constitutional right, there's nothing that says I can't speak. What you said is that you are going to participate as a city. Some run towards trouble, some run away, y'all ran away. Frank Banker, your point of order is in order, I find it well-founded.
And I didn't run away.
No, you did not run away, okay? Neither did Robin Aki. So, that's your update. Now, we have Frank Banker that has asked to speak with regards to, that concludes my comments, we typically, that would be the end, I would ask for a German. We have a citizen who wishes to speak, and we have Frank Banker who wishes to speak. At 7:45, this is one of the earlier meetings we've ever had, I would need a motion to, well, I'll make the motion to dispense with the rules, and allow these two people to speak afterward. We have only a second and a majority.
Sir, I'd like to comment on the parking situation, you opened the door on that, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, so we have a third person who wants to speak, let's dispense with the rules, so we have to do that. I have, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, to dispense with the rules? Aye. Okay, we will dispense with the rules. I'm recognizing Frank Banker first, I'm recognizing the citizen second, Glenn Dunn third, Frank Banker, you have the floor, and this will be a discussion, just so you know, okay?
I did attend that Bel Air Shore's meeting in November about the buoy situation, I was received very warmly there, their mayor let me even speak longer than the three minutes that I was allowed. I explained the situations to them, the legal situation, I said that their attorney had some of the issues a little bit incorrect. I'm hearing now, what you just said, Mr. Mayor, they're waiting till April, I don't know why, safety leads the way, okay? And in my opinion, this is a bully town, and I dealt with bullies all my life, I come from organized labor, so I've done nothing but fight bullies all my entire life, okay? And I've also known two things, there's a great abyss, okay, that divides us at Gulf Boulevard, and if you cater to a bully, they may give you something now, just to make it look good, okay? But they're going to come back after us tenfold with something else, all right? All your beach chairs are going to be eliminated next week, right? What's that, I smell suntan lotion? Now you're not allowed to have that on there, because that's a shame coat, all right? Don't ever give in to a bully. You got two people from the service, or three people from the service, okay? My God, we ever catered to bullies and threats? We might as well just give up all our constitutional rights. We did take an oath, I took an oath, okay, to defend the United States Constitution and the Florida Constitution. I've been bullied by a neighbor in town, I've been bullied by the FWC, which Section 9 of the Florida State Constitution, I don't even see where they give the permission or the authority to control boats. Section, I think it's, what is it? 280, or 327.46 clearly says, if you have a boat launching ramp airing, it doesn't even have to have a ramp, you're allowed to have a no-vent zone, okay? Idle-speed zone. 19th Street, I've seen people bring their boats in there, I've seen people bring boats in it, 40th Street, and I'm talking about paddle boats or whatever. So I believe their whole thing is unconstitutional, because the state has never expanded Section 9, Article 5, Section 9 of the state constitution. I'm just telling you, do not give in to bullies, all right? Anybody that gets into, I know you're endorsed by, and I don't want to get political here, but I know you're endorsed by Bel Air Shore's, I think that's a bad endorsement right now, but I think you should denounce that endorsement, Mr. Gass, and defend the people of this town that put you in office three years ago, is what I must say.
Let me just correct one thing, Mr. Banker, they didn't say they were waiting till April on that point, they said they're waiting to the end, because there's litigation. Let me tell you, let me look the citizens in the eye and tell them, okay? This litigation doesn't end with trial if we lose. I take it to the appellate division, and I take it to the Supreme Court, then it ends if I lose all of that. I don't intend to lose at the trial level. But if I do, if we get a bad judge, or we get a bad decision, we go to the next level, appellate. I do that all day long, every day of the year. I do that all day long, every day of the year. So, it's going to be a long haul. And if you need to talk with someone, you have my number, you know how to reach me. If you think it's a private issue, you can work on it.
I'm just saying, safety should always be the priority issue, and we should never have to cower to anybody over safety. Skin cancer, when we get, when we leave here, the people that believe there's a life after, how are you going to sit in front of your God and say, "That little kid down there got skin cancer, and I did nothing about it?" I mean, that is so ridiculous.
Citizen next.
Yeah, my example 3329, this is... Yeah, just made one point, just a question about bringing the two together, what if he has a mayor or he has the attorney on the case? That's all.
And to your point, you were the one who stood at that podium and asked for an update because you didn't know where it was. In fact, I called you the next day and gave you further information, did I not?
You gave me what?
I did. And I'm going to give the rest to these citizens here. Because not only does my litigation affect our citizens, okay? And if I could have, I would have brought it on behalf of every citizen, but the Florida Ethics Committee said I couldn't do it. So that's why I just brought it on my own behalf, and 43 courageous people jumped in behind me to be intervenors. But it also now is affecting what Frank Banker is killing himself trying to do, which is to save someone from getting killed by a motorboat. But nobody seems to give a damn, we're worried about other things, and politics. Well, I care. I swore that oath, as I said before, and so did you, Captain, okay? And you exactly, to protect it. And I'm going to protect it as long as I'm in a political situation. And by the way, we also swear as attorneys to uphold the Constitution. I swore that oath three times. So, yeah, I act on my own behalf, we've already had a motion here that distanced the city, and the city had the opportunity to join the suit, and they didn't join it. So I'm going this one alone, along with 43 other people. And I'm going to keep going, I'm going to keep going as long as I'm breathing, until I get that final court that says no. But I'm not going to get a court that says no, because as Frank Banker said, this is absurd. But I see that picture of his three-year-old granddaughter tossed down into the sun, and I see a picture of councilmember Bloom drinking a beer under a canopy, it needs to be sifted to the stomach. Glenn Dunn.
The council got copies of a press release from the Florida State Commission on Ethics. This goes back to the middle of September, there was a press release. And although the council has filled it, what I'll do is bring up some information that the residents may not be aware of. In this press release, it talked about many of the accusations that were brought before the Ethics Commissioner of Florida. And there were two accusations brought up that involved local people. Mayor Schmidt at Bel Air Shore and the town clerk, Bart Colucci. And there were accusations that they overreached or abused their positions of power with their township to issue parking permits for those parking access areas that we are always disputing and discussing. The finding by that commission, in each case, Mayor Schmidt and Bart Colucci, was they could find no reason in the information that was presented to them to proceed any further or direct any further action regarding any abuse or overreach of their duties or power. So, I don't know, it seems to me to be a data point in all of this, and I think it's something that is being lost in the context. We keep saying that they abuse their powers or overreach. Well, the bottom line is, a third set of eyes, an impartial body, has looked at this because some citizens made an ethics charge against these people, but they stepped back and looked at it with a protocol, and they came back and said, "No, we don't see any reason to proceed or direct any further action on this thing." And I don't know what all of that protocol involves. Maybe the city attorney can tell us how precise or how introspective that is, but that's the other side, and that's the rest of the story on this.
Wasn't the finding that there was no money reward on the charge? Not that, you know...
There was nothing about money.
Well, I'm just saying that they didn't gain financially or anything off of this.
No, I think based on what they said was, there's no reason to proceed or direct further action because they don't see an abuse or an overreach of their position in issuing those parking permits in those specific areas. So they were represented by council, there's obviously some proceeding and some humanating proceeding, where they look at all of this and they walk away saying, "We don't see anything here."
So what's your point?
My point was to just say the rest of the story, that's the rest of the story. Things seem to get lost in context here all the time, where we only put out information that seems to fit the narrative. And I'm just saying, nobody here is from Bel Air Shore saying, "Yeah, well, okay, we agree with what you're saying," but the rest of the story is this.
You're just putting a question... The rest of the story is that I don't think there's one citizen in this town, one in this council, would object that anybody from Bel Air Shore allowing someone to park in their parking lots if they treated us in the same manner, a friendly manner, okay?
That wasn't the question put before them, the question put before...
The question put before them was, the citizens are upset, okay? Because we're getting back political all the time, okay? So it goes to Tallahassee, which is what, 200 miles away from the situation, that looks at this legal aspect, and they say, "Yeah, all right, there's no ethical violation." But the violation is, they broke the contract.
No, I think that the issue is, the narrative we're trying to present is that they are overreaching and they are bullying us because they issued permits in those access areas. And a third body, the State Commission on Ethics, looked at it and said, "There is no overreach or abuse by what they're doing."
What ethics, okay?
Frank, can I cut in? Because you guys are having a long conversation, and I didn't just read the press release. I read the entire file, which is about three inches thick.
May I ask for a point of clarification first? Since you represent the gentleman that filed the ethics, I know you are representing him in some aspects due to that, would he be able to speak about it, city attorney Riley? Because he's actually representing...
Hang on a second, your point of order does, gets directed to me.
Okay.
Okay, and I can speak about it. Because I'm going to speak about what's in the report, which is a public document. You like to do public records requests, make one of Bart Colucci, she'll give you the report, okay? So, that report has a wealth of information in it, which again is, you know, able to be read by anyone. This is not a judicial body, this is an ethics body. And one of the key takeaways is that they weren't going to weigh in on this because it's subject to litigation. Now, I've not said anything that's not public information, okay? It's not the be all and end all. There was errors in the investigation, but it's not even worth pursuing at this point. Because it gets nothing in terms of the lawsuit. I can read, and so could Fred Riley, read what the ordinance says across the street. And when it says, "You shall only issue permits to people in Bel Air Beach," and you issue it to people who live in Bel Air, in Bel Air Shore, and parties, and you name it, then you're not following the law. A judge will decide that, that is one of the subjects on my case. So I'm not really too worried about what was in there. If you think it's the be all and end all, that's great. I have a scotch with Robert Schmidt, and maybe he'll take some advice, but quite frankly, I don't think it gets him anything. They're issuing permits to people that shouldn't have them. And the way I read the deed, along with five other attorneys who have way more real estate background than me, they have no right to issue that. We'll see the judge this. There's a gentleman in the back, I saw him.
I know, no one wants to be, sorry. I'm not involved in the case, I have no idea, I haven't heard anything, but interestingly enough, I took a picture. And since we all seem so concerned tonight about parking and limiting the access of parking to a candidate running for our own city for a couple of hours, let me just read you the picture of the parking permit that I saw, took a picture of in the beach access as I was going to the beach that I pay to get access for. It's for two vehicles, seemingly at any time, no time limit, to park anywhere in the 12th Street access between January 1st, 2021, and September 30th, 2021. Now again, right, I just happened to take this, and that topic came up, I said, "Hey, you know what? Let me go back and look at that." Because it's been several times where I've gone and the parking lot's full of people who don't even live in Bel Air Beach, yet I seem to be paying for that. So, just also point of order, from a citizen who's very confused how ultra-concerned we are about giving a political candidate access for an hour on the side of a street, but seemingly give non-Bel Air Beach residents access to something we're financially legally responsible for, literally carte blanche whenever they feel like it, that just doesn't seem to be consistent to reiterate a term used often tonight, consistent with what we've been talking about. So again, just asking for a very confused friend, where is the consistency from the council on parking? Because it seems like we care more about Tom Brady's parking than we do about our own political system or our own candidates or our own citizens. Again, I have no idea what's going on with that, it's almost...
Anyone else?
I always seem to bring up Tommy Boyes. I always tell, hey, maybe one day he'll be mad at me and come visit me to tell me about it, so I'll be okay with that. Now, I agree, my first thought when you sent that out, and now you just brought that up, in my first thought, I was like, "Why is he defending Bel Air Shore?" Like, why are you, why are you defending the mayor? And I mean, to me, I'm thinking, when I read that, I was like, "Okay, I bet it's a bunch of people up in Tallahassee thinking about this little tiny beach town, they're complaining about free, four areas of parking, like, really? We've got bigger things to deal with." So to me, I just took it as, whatever, it doesn't... Maybe they ethically didn't violate anything, but they still violated their rules. Maybe not their ethics.
And I guess the court will determine that, but the point is, hearing the other side of the story, what's the other narrative here? I mean, all we hear is one side of the story, and it seems like open mic night, you're making the narrative all the time, and all we hear is one side of the story. That was information, it's another data point. Data person, it's one more data point that maybe you should kind of sit back and say, "Not black, not white, there's something in the middle here." That's how...
See words, "one side of the story." I mean, it's right in your face. I mean, if I have a neighbor that takes his dog and cracks him in the yard every day, and doesn't pick it up, I'm going to say, "I got a problem."
I think we're getting cracked with.
I guess in fact...
See, you talk about open mics, there's a city of Bel Air Beach. I'm the mayor of Bel Air Beach, not Bel Air Shore. That's an open mic. Anyone from Bel Air Shore can come and talk anytime. They could have talked before they passed the umbrella ordinance. They could have talked during it. They could talk to me night and day, they've got my private cell phone number, which most people do not have. So if they want to talk, we can talk. We almost had a settlement, and somebody messed it up, who lives in this city. In terms of taking sides, you're a councilman from Bel Air Beach, not Bel Air Shore. Part of the ethics finding, and again, this was in the report, is that the city clerk was given authorization by their council. Go back and look at the date that the authorization was given. Fred Riley wouldn't let us do a resolution, you know why? Because he knows what the rule is. He sure as hell wouldn't let us amend an ordinance on the fly, but they did. It wasn't advertised, it wasn't shown, and the Division on Ethics didn't have a problem with it. Hey, for those of you who are going to tell Bel Air Shore, tell them I'll be asking those questions to them. How they got away with passing a motion that amends an ordinance without advertising it. There you go, open book test, that's how confident I am that they have no answer. They do a lot of things they just do because they feel like doing. Like putting paths in our easement, putting accesses. They do a lot of stuff they feel like doing. And I'm going to fight for our citizens as long as I'm up here. I'm never going to fight for them, never. Anybody else? Jim Van Scully.
Jim Van Scully, 7th Street, Bel Air Beach. I agree with the mayor 100% that you all took oath office to this city, to this city, not other cities. And I've repeatedly seen a couple of members on this council, and particularly somebody who's running for reelection, but in a different office, that has sided with the other city by trying to make it a motion to keep this city from being involved in this lawsuit. Now, I don't know how many people have come to this mic. I remember this city hall being filled with people. We had people all the way out in the hallway during the middle of COVID because of this umbrella issue, because of this umbrella issue. And yet today, we still have members that sit up on that dais that will not defend this city when they have this room and this hallway filled with citizens wanting this umbrella issue to be tackled by this city and for them to protect the property rights of these citizens. Remember, every time these people vote, and they vote against your rights, and those properties are part of your deeds, people, wake up and stop letting it be political. Do what's right for the city, do what's right for your properties, and back somebody just alone on this issue, and stop trying to play politics with it. It's your property values, too, I don't understand it, it's ridiculous.
Seeing no other hands, no other comments? Close that, and then we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, approved, 7-0, everyone have a good night.